Good evening. I'm Kalamazoo City Deputy Manager Jeff Chamberlain and welcome to tonight's Kalamazoo City Commission Meeting of Monday, August 2nd, 2021. Tonight's meeting is being streamed live on the City of Kalamazoo's Facebook Page and the City of Kalamazoo's YouTube Channel. You can also listen to tonight's meeting by calling area code 269-552-6425 and entering meeting ID number 918-6166-7153 when prompted. And you can also leave a public comment for tonight's meeting by calling area code 269-226-6573. And like to turn tonight's meeting over to Mayor David Anderson.
Thank you once again Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain. I appreciate it. I would like to call this regular business meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission for August 2nd, 2021 to order and offer a warm welcome to everyone who's participating here this evening. Clerk Borling, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Cunningham.
Here in the great city of Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Hess.
Here in the city of Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Knott.
Here at Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Pradel.
President in the city of Kalamazoo.
Commissioner Urban.
Here in the city of Kalamazoo.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Here in the city of Kalamazoo.
Mayor Anderson.
Here in Kalamazoo. Thank you so much Clerk Borling. Tonight for our opening ceremony, the invocation will be given by Moise Ratsara, and please correct me if I've said that wrong, but I appreciate having you here. It's an honor. And he is the pastor of the Kalamazoo Seventh Day Adventist Church Pastor.
Thank you so much. Let's have a word of prayer together. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for your love, for your tremendous care. Thank you for each leader here that is present and thank you for the city, the great city of Kalamazoo, in which we all reside. I pray that you be with your leaders here as they make decisions. Bless them, protect and well our city, and may we grow closer as a people and may we, Father, have a bond of love among one another. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda is a proclamation, and I'm going to be having the honor of reading this proclamation this evening. This is a proclamation recognizing a long-serving mayor in the city of Kalamazoo. I think he was the youngest mayor ever elected actually in Kalamazoo and served with some gaps for many years on the commission and as mayor. Cared a lot about the city. This is a proclamation from the city of Kalamazoo honoring the legacy of former Mayor Edward J. Annan Jr. Whereas Edward J. Annan Jr. Was born and raised in Kalamazoo and devoted much of his life to public service in his beloved community. And whereas Edward J. Annan Jr. Was elected to the city commission at age 26 in 1969, and two years later became the youngest newly-elected mayor in the United States, distinguishing him as the youngest person to ever serve as mayor of Kalamazoo. And whereas Mayor Annan served on the Kalamazoo City Commission for seven terms over 16 years, including five terms as mayor, working with a total of 23 other commissioners. And whereas Mayor Annan led his fellow commissioners and a dedicated city staff as they addressed the issues of poverty, downtown deterioration, struggling neighborhoods, and economic stagnation. And whereas Mayor Annan worked tirelessly and collaboratively with residents in every part of the community, with neighborhood civic and business leaders, and with officials from other units of government to effectively address those issues and others. And whereas Mayor Annan created and nurtured several unprecedented initiatives in downtown development, infrastructure, parks, and recreation, and neighborhood improvement that leveraged hundreds of millions of dollars of public and private resources, creating opportunities for all citizens in the city of Kalamazoo and benefiting the entire region. And whereas Mayor Ed Annan's dynamic and forceful leadership in the community continued long after he retired from the city commission through his commitment and hard work to protect and enhance the rights and well-being of his fellow citizens. Now therefore, on behalf of the 53rd City Commission, I, David F. Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, do hereby honor the life of former Mayor Edward J. Annan for his years of service to the Kalamazoo community and encourage all residents to join me in celebration of his continued legacy. I had the honor of interacting with Mayor Annan multiple times over my time in office and even several times in the recent months. And it is with sadness that we recognize his passing. I want to offer our condolences to his family and to them recognize the sacrifice that they made so that Mayor Edward J. Annan Jr. Could serve the city. Thank you. Commission, you have before the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any changes commissioners would like to see? Seeing no changes, the current agenda stands. Next item is communications. City Manager Risma.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple items. First, I wanted to take a moment this evening to discuss the historic news that was shared in our community at a press conference at City Hall last Wednesday. The Kalamazoo Foundation for Excellence, FFE, has received a historic and transformational commitment of $400 million to be directed towards its permanent endowment for the benefit of Kalamazoo. This gift will be fulfilled over the next 10 years and together with previous donations establish a $500 million endowment to carry forward the bold vision of Imagine Kalamazoo and future goals forever. The mission of FFE is to support the goals of the city of Kalamazoo, fund aspirational projects throughout our communities, and empower Kalamazoo residents to achieve the lives they want for themselves and their families. FFE maintains the 2017 property tax reduction, balances the city's budget on an annual basis, and funds diverse projects that can be seen and felt throughout our community. Projects like lead pipe replacement, affordable housing construction, park renovations, youth development programs, and small business support during the pandemic. The gift has been made anonymously by long-term residents of the Kalamazoo community, and I would like to extend my deepest thanks to their generosity and vision. My gratitude also goes out to each of my colleagues and teammates here at the city, to the FFE Board of Directors, and our dozens of community partners who advance Imagine Kalamazoo every day. Please join me in celebrating a bright future of inclusive prosperity here in Kalamazoo.
Thank you very, very much, Manager Risma. I appreciate those sentiments. And I'm sure, yes, Manager Risma, go ahead.
Sorry, I cut you off.
Go ahead.
Okay. The second item I have is we anticipate that the final independent report from the OIR group will be released later this week. This is the third-party agency which reviewed the events of late May and early June last year and the events surrounding August 15 Proud Boys March. The complete report will be posted to the city's website later this week, and we will send out an announcement when the report is released. The city commission will hold a special joint meeting with the Citizens Public Safety Review and Appeals Board, otherwise known as CESPRAB, the evening of Tuesday, August 10 at 6:00 PM. Representatives from the OIR group will present their findings from the report, and there'll be opportunities for the commission and CESPRAB members to ask questions of the OIR group. The meeting will be held virtually and will be streamed live on the city's Facebook page, YouTube channel, and public media network. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thanks, Detective Risma. I appreciate that. Next is our consent agenda. Manager Risma.
Public hearing or public?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped right over that. Thank you. Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain. This is a time for public comments, and do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir, we do. We have some, and we'll begin with those right away. Thank you.
Thank you. We are having some technical difficulties pulling up the messages tonight.
Hi, my name is James Crowe, and I live within the Kalamazoo city limits. I'm a teacher at Porter Central High School, and I'm calling today to ask that the city assign some money and prioritize the issue of gun violence. There's a lot of people who are already working against gun violence and are working to address that. Those of us who have been impacted, and I want to say thank you to them. But more needs to be done. Gun violence is a huge issue within our city. We hear it on the news. I hear it from my house constantly, and we need to recognize that this is a problem and needs to be dealt with. And I understand that there's a lot that goes into that. There's a lot of different priorities. A lot of people making requests and emails, but again, I ask the council that you please prioritize this as it's a very big issue. I know that there was recently a large donation made towards the city, and that definitely helps. So if ever there was a time and the availability of resources to help with this issue, I don't know of a better one. There is money that's already been allocated against gun violence, but we need more. We need resources. We need people. We need this to be a dedicated community effort led by members of the community, four members of the community. You know, there's a lot that is going to need to go into it, but I know that you guys can do the right thing and prioritize this and help improve the welfare, the lives, and help make things right for people who have been impacted. We all know someone who's been impacted by gun violence. My heart goes out to you guys. And I just, I really hope that you guys step up and do what needs to be done. And with that, thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Fatsinger. I do not live within the city limits, although I did growing up and graduated from Kalamazoo Central and Western, and I have family that also live in the city limits. I am a community wellness supervisor at Vampiric Community Mental Health, although I'm not calling as an official employee. But I am calling today to ask you to please strongly consider allocating more funding and prioritization of the issue of gun violence in our community. I also want to thank those who've already are working to address that. But the gun violence is growing, as you know, and it needs to stop. And we really need to work together collaboratively with other groups to prevent and address these threats and to promote healing. We need some, you know, clear focus on this topic because it is multifaceted and it's going to require a very focused, intentional, multifaceted approach that is both community-based and evidence-based. Thank you very much for listening to my comments. I appreciate the work that you already have done and for those people who have already been working very much. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Molly Mecklenburg, and I live within the city of Kalamazoo. I'm active in a couple different organizations and community efforts in town. I work with Griffin Place, and I'm also a founding member of Peace House on the east side of Kalamazoo. And I'm calling in today to ask that the city allocate more funding and prioritize the issue of gun violence in our community. I want to give thanks to people who have already been doing this work. We have Isaac's Gun Violence Initiative Team, of course KDPS, and the Township Police Urban Alliance, and other organizations that really are considering this issue and thinking of any way possible that we can try to reduce the amount of gun violence in the community. And this is really important. It needs to be a collaborative effort. And so we're just asking for some support from the city. Seems like with the $400 million that were recently donated, that there should be some resources that we can use to address this issue. I know that there's already been 100,000 that has been allocated, and it would also be good to find out about how that money was spent. So thank you for your time. I just want to definitely recognize the victims of gun violence in our community, including two young teenagers who were shot on the east side of town just recently, and the elementary school student who lost his life earlier this summer. So recognize the loss and know that when young people are killed due to gun violence, we all suffer as a result of that. So with the hope of making our community safer, I ask that you act on this issue. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marisol Alcala, and I live within the city limits. I am the Chief Executive Officer of Griffin Place, and I'm calling today to ask the city to allocate more funding and prioritize the issue of gun violence in our community. I want to thank those that already are working to address gun violence and help those impacted, especially the GBI team and those that every day are supporting our citizens and intervening without any recognition. Gun violence in our community needs to stop, yet I recognize there's no one answer. We need collaboration among groups to prevent and address active threats and promote healing, but we also need more prioritization and concern on this topic. Gun violence is a multifaceted issue that requires a multifaceted approach that is both evidence-based and community-informed. Strategies on this issue must come from the community members most impacted. With what, 400 million donated to the city? Clearly, there's no shortage of resources to address this issue. It's also important that the city speaks on how the $100,000 allocated for gun violence in December of 2020 is being spent. Most importantly, for those that it was intended to help. Lastly, to those impacted, we want to say that we care for you, and we care for your loss. Thank you for your time.
Sir, city resident. On Monday, November 8, four new people will be sworn in as Kalamazoo City Commissioners. This will be one of the commission's largest turnovers in its 103-year history, despite Bobby Hopewell's assertion in 2014 that four-year terms would provide for more stability on the commission. Mayor David Anderson or Vice Mayor Patrice Griffin are among those not returning this November. Again, we have former Mayor Bobby Hopewell to blame for this. Prior to November 2014, the mayor of Kalamazoo was the top vote getter among the seven people who won two-year terms in each city commission election. It was like everyone was running for mayor with the top six runners-up winning commission seats. If the old election system was still in place, both David Anderson and Patrice Griffin would still be with us this November. In 2014, Bobby Hopewell duped the voters into changing the city charter and implementing direct election of the mayor, despite the fact that the mayor doesn't have much more power than any other member of the commission. The city manager is the top executive of the city, not the mayor, who is more like the top legislator. In most years, direct election of the mayor in both Kalamazoo and Portage leads to essentially uncontested races where an incumbent mayor doesn't have any serious competition. Kalamazoo will finally have a competitive mayoral race this year, but at the expense of losing either two or 16 years of experience on the commission at a time when experience among the commissioners is historically low. Whether it is David Anderson or Patrice Griffin who doesn't return this November, the loser's supporters will probably wish that the old election system was still in place. If they are interested in reverting to the previous election system, then let me know, and I can help direct and help end direct election of the mayor. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Appleyard, and I reside in the city of Kalamazoo. I'm calling to comment tonight on Agenda Item H, the purchase of 322 East Stockbridge and 218 Emerson for an affordable housing complex. I'm, I think, building homes in an area that floods frequently in an era of climate change is foolhardy at best. There must be a more desirable site for this housing project to be built, or perhaps we should be looking at more closely at an infill project that benefits those who need housing and benefits neighborhoods as well. That's my comment. Thank you. Good night.
Hello, this is Joe Byers, and I'm a city resident. First, I'd like to talk about the way Commissioner Urban responded to critics of the tree planting that was approved during the last meeting. To say that folks should be happy with whatever tree the city provides is classist and out of touch. To blatantly dismiss citizen concerns is abhorrent. I'd also like to voice my extreme opposition to the purchase of the South Town property. Over and over, for literal years, residents of South Town have been vocally against development of this property as it's their last bit of green space. Maybe someone can answer this question for me. Why are the objectives of Bobby Hopewell and David Anderson more important than what the community wants? Y'all are going to approve the natural features protection overlay, but during the same meeting approve the destruction of one of those natural features? Please make it make sense for me. Now is the time to stand with residents and against more environmental racism. Or y'all can just continue to do what you've been doing and maintain the status quo.
Hello, my name is Dr. David Fatsinger. I do not live within the city limits. I am a board member of Griffin Place, and I'm a retired licensed psychologist. I'm calling today to ask the city to allocate more funding and prioritize the issue of gun violence in our community. I want to thank those that are already dealing with this issue, especially the Gun Violence Initiative Team and everyday citizens who intervene without recognition. Gun violence, among many things that are going on now, is a major problem. It's going to need a collaborative effort. Certainly, there is a great deal of money available to deal with this issue, and I hope the city will prioritize across the board dealing with the poverty and trauma related to gun violence. I am a gun owner. I support Second Amendment rights. I have no problem signing, you know, doing what you need to do to get licensed guns. I also have, as a psychologist, have dealt with the trauma related to gun violence, and I've seen it with friends over the years. So bottom line is I want to express my support for a collaborative effort to prioritize gun violence in Kalamazoo community area, and I hope that County Commission or the City Commission takes this seriously. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Ruth Garcia. I am the Restorative Practices Community Liaison in Griffin Place, though I do not live within the city limits. I am also a member of the TRHT Law Design Team, part of ALPAC, on ISH GBI team, and am an advisory board member of the Brown and Black Therapy Collective. I'm calling in again to urge the city to prioritize funding and awareness towards the issue of gun violence in our community. I know this issue is viewed as important, but I believe this is one of the most urgent issues our city is facing. I want to thank those who are already working to address this issue and those impacted. I send my condolences to you. I want to thank those everyday citizens who intervene without recognition. The gun violence in our city has to stop, though I recognize there is no one answer. This is a very multifaceted issue, and it's one that we can improve. I believe we can improve this by gathering community information, a community-formed approach, much like was done with the recent zoning. This is a success in our community and one that we can apply to this great and devastating issue. There's certainly no shortage of resources or money in our community. It begs the question whether or not this issue is truly a priority. It is a very urgent one. It has devastating short-term impacts. There's surely no amount of money that can encapsulate the loss of a loved one. But there are also fiscal and long-term impacts that are happening right now. We are in the very wake of implicit and explicit biases being formed. And again, the most compelling reason, of course, is that loss of life. We need to start looking to those most impacted and gather what they view is the worst problem of us all and what they view needs to happen most immediately. We also need to start talking about long-term solutions as well as the urgently needed issues to address this. Really, the city should be more transparent and upfront about how the 100K that was allocated in December has been spent, especially by those who it was intended to help. Lastly, and deeply, to those most impacted, I want to say I care for you and I care for your loss. Kalamazoo, you have my dedication for life. Thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Tina McClinton, and I live at 310 Lake Street. I live in the city of Kalamazoo. I am calling about the green space in South Town neighborhood, Lake the Stockbridge. Please accept it in the NFP protection plan. This little green space is our neighborhood's last green space. It has a natural watershed, 60% wetlands, 40% is on a flood plain, and lots of wildlife, lots of big trees to help with flooding issues. That's our last piece of country in this crazy city we live in. I see you bought the old DSS building on Stockbridge. Our South Town neighborhood plan, which you will not accept, was to put a senior housing development there. There are many senior citizens like me that live in South Town neighborhood, and we want to continue to feel safe. How can we feel safe if you do not include us and include our neighborhood in the planning stages? Why do you use other neighborhoods against us to destroy our neighborhood? We do not have shootings, assaults, break-ins like nearby neighborhoods. We do not want you to bring our neighborhood down like you have other neighborhoods. The constant flooding, we have a good quality of life in South Town neighborhood, besides the constant flooding and sewer backups, that we wish to keep it. Keep it is the existing residents, business owners, that keep our neighborhood and quality of life better than the other neighborhoods. And you use Edison neighborhood against us. We don't want the problem that Edison neighborhood has. We do not have any of those problems. Now, as a part of this development, including upgrading, does a part of this development include upgrading development? A part of this development include upgrading South Town neighborhood's failed infrastructure? If it does, it is a step in the right direction. If you are not going to fix the known sanitary sewer storm and sewer crisis in South Town neighborhood, then by all means, do not develop this say. Until you do, please protect our last green space in South Town neighborhood that all the neighbors and we all love so much. It is our little piece of country in the city, and it helps us with flooding when no one else does. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Bale. I'm the Executive Director of Friendship Village, Kalamazoo. I am not a resident of Kalamazoo, but I do work within the city of Kalamazoo. I previously sent a letter to the city commissioners regarding Friendship Village's opposition to being included within the natural features protection overlay district and ordinance. In reading over the proposed ordinance, we don't believe that the two parcels identified meet the criteria of the ordinance, nor will they ever be disturbed or built upon. The first is a retention pond at the west side of the property bordering Drake Road. This is part of the city of Kalamazoo's stormwater system, which is inspected annually. All drainage from our main campus flows into this retention pond, except for our clubhouse that flows into another retention pond. This area could never be built upon. We did add some plants around the pipes that came out of the side of the hill just because of aesthetics and looking better, so you're not seeing the pipe coming of aesthetics and looking better, so you're not seeing the pipe coming out of the hill. But we don't feel that that meets the wetlands criteria. The second parcel identified is what we called our Village Woods. It was originally a popcorn field when Friendship Village was built in 1975. Under the founding guidance of Emma Pitcher, our horticulturist and early resident beginning over 30 years ago, the Village Woods is now a memorial garden to past and current residents as nearly every tree and planting is offered and commemorated with a plaque in memory or celebration of someone who has lived here at Friendship Village. Its care and preservation is an intrinsic part of our culture and it will never be built upon. So in conclusion, the Board of Directors and I respectfully request an amendment to the proposed NFP Overlay District and Ordinance, removing these Friendship Village properties from the plan. Thank you for your consideration and I believe you have my information should you need to get ahold of me. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is David Benak. I live in the city. I'm calling in regards to Item H on the agenda this evening. I am strongly encouraging the Commission to respectfully change the purchase of this so that it is restricted to just the existing hard surfaces and building structures and leaves the wooded area intact. There is discussion in this proposal to do a wetland restoration. There would be no reason to do a wetland restoration if you didn't build in the wetland, so we should probably not build in the wetland. Doing this is going to cause more flooding and more damage to the homes and property of people who already live there in South Town, this area that already floods badly, and this development will make that situation worse. And, on top of it, this is somewhat ironic, that this is the meeting at which you're going to discuss the Natural Features Protection Ordinance. The National Feature, Natural Features Protection Ordinance already protects this exact parcel of property as in the first proposed, the first edition of it. So this is already protected, you're already violating the Natural Features Protection Ordinance, which pretty much shows exactly what you think of it and it shows that this is a bad faith action. And then, another element of this is that this sends a really bad message and really effectively shows the attitude of the city leadership towards vulnerable and homeless people in our city. If you're going to say that the only place in the city, the only piece of property that exists for affordable housing is in a floodplain, that also happens to have Portage Creek running along it, which also goes along the allied superfund site, that sends a very clear message of your attitude towards affordable housing in our city. So I strongly urge that you do not purchase this property as written. The only logical thing to do would be to restrain the development to those hard surfaces and to buildings that already exist. Thank you.
This is Richard Stewart. I'm a resident of the city in the South Town neighborhood. I'm calling regarding the Agenda Item to purchase the DHS State of Michigan property, former Michigan offices on Stockbridge. We, at the South Town neighborhood, have not been notified of this till we saw it on this week's agenda. We had prepared our neighborhood plan that the city staff refuses to accept to forward to the City Commission for review, but in that plan, we had designated that area for future development as a senior and disabled housing complex. So the current use may be fitting for the immediate need, but we'd like to see it in the future planned for senior and disabled housing. So, the city staff apparently has bypassed South Town neighborhood once again with all of our contact groups. And if you're going to get buy-in for the stakeholders in the immediate neighborhood, you should include us and not go behind our backs. All city staff knows how to reach many of us in the South Town neighborhood and we shouldn't have to find out about them in this way. You can probably gain support simply by being honest and including us in the preliminary stages. I hope that one of you on the Commission will instruct city staff to at least accept our neighborhood plan, the South Town neighborhood plan, so we can be included in future discussions instead of using the neighboring associations against us as a weapon. Thank you.
Hello, hi, my name is Hector Garcia and I'm calling in to see what the city is doing about gun violence. I would really like to see the city prioritize this issue as there's been an increase in gun violence this past year. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last public comment for tonight.
Thank you Deputy City Manager Chamberlain. I want to thank everyone who took the time and made the effort to call in and leave comments for us this evening. Next is the Consent Agenda, City Manager.
We have eight items on the agenda this evening. First is the approval of a one-year contract extension with Caris LLC for the purchase of 75% phosphoric acid in the amount of $113,400. Next is the first reading of an ordinance amending the text of Chapter 50, Article 6 of the Zoning Code regarding the Natural Features Protection Overlay and schedule a public hearing for August 16, 2021. Next is the first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map regarding the Natural Features Protection Overlay and schedule a public hearing for August 16, 2021. Next is the adoption of a resolution approving Amendment 1 to the Kalamazoo County Solid Waste Management Plan for Waste Not C and D Recycling Center. Next is the adoption of a resolution approving Amendment 2 to the Kalamazoo County Solid Waste Plan for the Miller Road Transfer Station. Next is the adoption of a resolution designating the polling facility locations for precincts 5, 10, 15, 22, and 23 to be used during the election on November 2, 2021 and for each election thereafter. Next is the approval of an easement agreement for air rights associated with the Graphic Packaging International Project at 1500 North Pitcher Street. And finally, approval of the appointment of Dr. John Oliver to the Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo Organizing Committee for a term expiring on March 31, 2022.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Commissioners, the requested action is to approve Items 1 through 8 and authorize the City Manager to sign all documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
To move.
A motion made by Commissioner Cunningham, supported by Commissioner Hess. Thank you. Clerk Borling, will you please call roll?
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Knott.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Items on the Consent Agenda are approved. Next is our regular Agenda, H.
Thank you, Mayor. Item H1 is the approval of the purchase of 322 East Stockbridge Avenue, 216 East Emerson Street, and 218 East Emerson Street from the Lewis J. I. Family Trust in the amount of $2 million and approve an amendment to the 2021 Foundation for Excellence Aspirational Fund budget in the amount of $200, or $2 million, with the intent to facilitate the development of permanent housing units, wetland restoration, and small commercial development consistent with Imagine Kalamazoo Master Plan and Edison Neighborhood Plan.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there a staff report on this item?
Yeah, Community Planning and Economic Development Director Rebecca Kick will be providing a presentation.
Director Kick, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. As I was introduced, so Rebecca Kick, I'm the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development for the city of Kalamazoo. I have prepared for you tonight a very short slide presentation to be able to summarize what was in the packet. As tonight, I'm bringing you a potential property acquisition consideration. This is the first time we're all discussing this property and thinking about it for purchase to look forward to thinking about what we could do with this very large property in our community. Deputy City Manager Chamberlain, could you please share the slides? Thank you so much. And could you go to the next slide, please? So, I wanted to familiarize you first with the location of these particular properties. They are on Stockbridge, just east of Verdic Street and bordered by railroad tracks as well as to the south of Reed Street. This has been, prior to the Department of Health and Human Services, it was a Kmart, a shopping mall, and this has been vacant now since the new DHHS building was constructed. So this is approximately 14 acres. It is comprised of three parcels that the Ives Family Trust is selling, the appraised value at $1.1 million. We are, we have negotiated a $2 million purchase price with the Ives family. The Community Planning and Economic Development has conducted typically, the typical due diligence for our property acquisition purposes. We did a Phase 1 on the buildings, which indicated the necessity for a Phase 2 due to former tanks at the northwest corner of the site, which is currently where the new Red Bud retail shop is. And it was a former place where tanks were held and so we also did a Phase 2 and we are working on a baseline environmental assessment for our own due diligence. We investigated sewer and water lines. The main lines did, do need to be cleaned out if we intend to reuse the buildings in any particular way. Additionally, if we were to use the buildings, they would need further investigation. Our building official, Roger Iverson, indicated that the south building, the former DHHS offices, are in very good shape. The roof is in good shape. The mechanicals and the plumbing fixtures, however, would need to undergo further inspection if we were to reuse that particular building. The former bingo hall, however, is in much more disrepair and would need to be environmentally cleaned up of asbestos. So when we toured that, we did see that there was quite a bit of damage to the roof and that it would need full environmental remediation if we were to think about using that building. Have the next slide, please. And this highlights the two residential lots that are for the south and those are the East Emerson lots, just so that you know kind of how it was part of the entire parcel. And the next slide. Just to look at this zoning very quickly, the entire parcel is within the Natural Features Protection Overlay and this is, was wonderful news to all of us. I know I heard a couple of the callers talking about the Natural Features Protection, which is over this particular parcel. This is why we feel it is so important for the city to consider the purchase of this property and to consider how the community might develop this property and what types of development should go here is because of the flooding, because of the creek, because of the proximity to the railroad tracks. While we said that there was in master plan and in the Edison Neighborhood Plans the desire for affordable housing here or for small retail and for natural features to be celebrated on this site, those are remarks from the master plan. There are no planned developments for this site at this time. There are no planned anything for this site at this time. We don't own it. That's why I'm presenting this opportunity to the City Commission to consider what we would do with this parcel. Having 14 acres come up for sale nearly in the center of our city in such an important neighborhood as the Edison neighborhood is not something we should just let slide by, right? And I felt very strongly about that when I was working on this project with my staff and with master plan, with the Edison Neighborhood Plan. We felt like this was something we really wanted to bring to you all for this important decision. So, the other two properties at 216 East Emerson and 218 East Emerson are in residential zoning categories of RM15, as well as one of the parcels is split zoned between the community commercial, which is one of the most robust community, commercial zonings that we, that we have for this area. So, you know, the, the way that this was developed is certainly not the way that we're envisioning it now. The next slide, please. As I mentioned before, Community Planning and Economic Development staff consulted the master plan. The future land use for this area is called Neighborhood Edge. This land use allows for a mix of zoning districts that respond to the Edison Neighborhood context. The land use contains small-scale neighborhood development. The zoning district can include single-family to medium-density residential, small footprint retail, offices, restaurants, and service-oriented development. Development can, can occur in a variety of different building types and residential structures. Particularly in the Edison neighborhood along some of the corridors like Verdic and Portage Street, there are a lot of houses that were converted into commercial uses. Even along Stockbridge, there are many houses that are used as photography studios and the like, and that's something that we would really love to continue to emulate is, you know, being able to have residential and residentially owned businesses in this area. Additionally, the master plan does call out a housing strategy to increase our quantity of attainable housing units and, again, those types of housing units that could be used in this new future land use area are anything from single-family homes to, again, low-density residential, like four complexes or six complexes. And the next slide, please. Our next steps would be to bring this item back to you, back to the Commission on August the 16th for a final action for property purchase. This presentation I'm giving to you tonight is really to get your feedback and questions and to be sure that I'm bringing you all of the information that you need to be able to make that final decision. If the property purchase is approved on August the 16th, our intent would be to close on the property and finalize our baseline environmental assessment. At that point, we would begin working through the community engagement outline that I've outlined for you on the next slide. The prop, if the property is not approved, staff will always continue to seek out land and economic development opportunities that align with our master plan as well as with our neighborhood plans. This is something that we have worked hand-in-hand with many of our neighborhood executive directors on. Have the next slide, please. So our engagement plan, if we do purchase the property, the first thing we would do is create a request for proposals to solicit the help of a civil engineer and environmental firm to assist us with how, if any, development should happen on the site and where should it happen? If we were to, you know, demolish the buildings, if we were to demolish all of that asphalt, what, what would we need to do to be able to develop housing or small retail? what, what would we need to do to be able to develop housing or small retail? In September, we would close on the property. In October, we would hold our first kickoff meeting with the community to really start to discuss what kind of land uses, kind of preservation, and what does that Edison neighborhood plan say about this area? In December, we would approve our consultant after our RFP process. And we would then begin having community meetings with the consultant team where we would have data and maps and site visits with the community. So March through July, we would really be hitting the pavement hard with the community working through those plans. In August, we would hopefully bring to you a land use and zoning plan. And what we're hoping to do with engagement next summer really would be able to have lots of in-person meetings or open houses, hopefully onsite at the site. There's nothing better than being there while you're trying to plan. We would also prepare online communications and posts as part of our regular Imagine Kalamazoo website and projects page. Again, having interactive maps for those that could not attend all of our community meetings. We've been working tirelessly, trying to like have lots of videos for community members to be able to watch and comment on. So you don't have to be in person at meetings. Of course, if COVID continues to persist through next year, it's possible that many of these in-person meetings would then become online meetings as well. We will be working through both of the neighborhood associations from the Vine, the Edison, holding meetings throughout that area. Because it is such a large parcel that it really should be a multi-neighborhood effort. And that's my last slide. We would like to go to the next slide and stop sharing the screen. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you very much, Director Kick. I appreciate that. Are there questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Urban.
Okay, there we go. Well, the first thing that comes to my mind is right now, that, that site is decidedly unattractive. It is out of use. So I am hoping that through whatever the city does, we'll end up with something better than what's there now. The, the key thing I see is if the city owns it, the city controls the development. If it is sold to a private developer, the leverage we have over what goes on that property, how it's used, how it's developed, goes way, way, way down. So this is an opportunity that if we handle it right, it's going to be a super blessing for all of us. But as you can tell from the questions we were getting during the citizen comment time, there is some concern about whether we will handle it right. Well, I have trust that we will and maybe some others don't. As that's how public life works these days. But getting down to specifics, that, that vast portion of that area is covered by asphalt now. Now unless that runoff from that asphalt goes into a storm sewer directly into the river, it seems like that's contributing to flooding everywhere in Kalamazoo. Just because there's no absorption of, of rainwater in a place that it falls. It seems to me by, by removing that asphalt and putting planting trees where, where appropriate, big trees and creating a larger area for for stormwater to be collected onsite and then subsequently evaporated. We could actually make it a whole lot better than it is now. So I'm not frightened by the prospect of us buying it. But there are some genuine concerns out there that we're going to have to be patient and thorough in explaining what the options are and how they work. And this is an opportunity for, for education. And because of the staff we have, we have the capability of doing the, the learning and the education. If we ever, I remember there was a period long in Kalamazoo history before the present administration where there wasn't much listening going on and there sure wasn't much education going on. So maybe we have that bad reputation from years ago, but we're, we're doing a lot better. So I'm hopeful. I'm looking forward instead of backward. So yeah, the proof is in the pudding, but we all have a chance to, to put our oil in the water here. So I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Urban. So for this time specifically, are there questions for staff about this proposal? Obviously, well, an opportunity for general discussion after a motion is made, but yes, Commissioner Hess.
Speaking of putting our oil in the water and flooding, I'm wondering, I see Director Baker on the call here and I don't know if he's prepared or not to speak to the area of flooding in, in that, in that area of purchase and, and what removal of the asphalt might do and how we would maintain integrity in the, in the flood plain and the green space.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hess. The, this proposed property is situated nearly wholly in the flood plains in, in terms that it's, you know, pretty much encompasses, the property encompasses all within a flood plain area. That being said, the, the flood prone nature of, of these areas are much greater than the property, the individual properties themselves. Essentially, when Portage Creek gets into a capacity deficient situation where the amount of runoff overwhelms the channel capacity. And then also when the Kalamazoo River goes into a flood stage and then it backs up into the Portage Creek. So these are two flood events that could occur independently or simultaneously together to create flooding within this flood zone here in Kalamazoo. And so this flood zone is connected, if you will, kind of all the way back to the Kalamazoo River. And so when we look at, from an acreage standpoint, you know, what, what is our deficiency from flooding in Kalamazoo? It's about 4,000 acres. So we would need to add 4,000 acres of new wetland or flood plain that doesn't currently exist into Kalamazoo to prevent all future flood events. And to put that in perspective, that'd be about 25% of the entire city Kalamazoo corporate boundaries. And so what those numbers give us is some perspective in terms of the, the majority of the flooding that happens, you know, the 2018 flooding events. Those are something that's really happening, given our situation with 1,000 square miles of water stream above us. And that this, we're at the bottom of the bowl, so to speak. So, you know, understanding that preventing flood occurrences in this area is a much larger problem than one parcel or one property at a time. And with that, you know, that kind of leads into work that we started in 2018. The city and their joint project with the United States Geological Survey, the United States Army Corps of Engineers and the National Weather Service, started upon a work to complete full surveys of Portage Creek and Kalamazoo River. We've been adding some USGS gauge stations and we're tying all that work into what we call a flood inundation mapping program. That deliverable product of that work is planning to go into service in late 21, early 2022. And that's going to give us the ability to understand, warn and advise the public in a parcel by parcel indication will be able to determine what the parcel by parcel impacts are under any flood situation. Much greater takeaway from that project is the ability for our engineers to now model and experiment with flood prevention scenarios. So we now have the ability to design alternatives and to then work those through a model to determine whether or not they're feasible. And staff are currently working on a Portage Creek tunnel bypass enclosure complex feasibility model to review with Army Corps of Engineers to determine if there is a feasible alternative essentially when we reach flows that are of greater capacity than what Portage Creek can handle, that will drop that flow into a nine foot diameter tunnel, convey that water over to an area around Mill Street and then lift that water back up into the Portage Creek, or excuse me, the Kalamazoo River. So, you know, essentially staff are working on flood alternatives, flood mitigation. Also, you know, kind of looking at this holistically. We partnered with EPA during the allied Superfund site during the construction there. And we're adding seven new acres of, of wetland upstream of this area to help reduce and attenuate flood events. Now you heard me speak earlier about we would need 4,000 acres to solve all flooding problems in Kalamazoo. We're, we're going to get there slowly, maybe a little bit at a time. So we're going to add seven acres. That's going to help somewhat. But ultimately, to prevent all flooding situations in Kalamazoo, it's going to take something very large to happen in Kalamazoo. There's going to have to be structural changes, channel modifications, you know, to the river and creek itself.
Thank you, Director Baker. Other questions, Commissioner Hess?
No, I'm just going to say, Director Baker, once again, you have exceeded my expectations for our presentation. You definitely have addressed a lot of the concerns with the purchase of this property. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a purchase price that was much higher than the praise price. Can you guys speak to that?
With us for you, Director Kick.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Cunningham. Yes, the, the purchase price is about 1.5% above the, the appraised price. At this time, we felt like the asking price was $2 million. That's what I was asking for the property through calendar, their broker. And I wanted to be clear that our assessor had given us the $1.1 million appraised price for the property because it is vacant. It is a former retail office space. Those spaces do not appraise very highly. If this property were developed differently or in not, it not in the condition that this particular property is in, the $2 million asking price would be very reasonable. And the appraiser did say to us, give us the guidance as city staff that he felt that a $2 million asking price was very much in line with what the market would ask for this property.
Other questions, Commissioner Cunningham? Other questions, commissioners? For staff at this time. Seeing that at this point, Director Kick, I just have a couple of questions for you. So the property was for sale on the open market. Is that correct?
Correct.
And, and so anyone can buy it, you know, it's listed for sale.
Yes.
With its current zoning, what kinds of uses would be allowed there as it is for a potential purchaser?
So with the community commercial, any of the uses that you see along Stadium Drive, Westnidge, the retail space that used to be there, you know, it was a former Kmart. Any of those uses would still be able to be uses on that property. You can build up to six stories in a community commercial. The, even if it were a mixed use building, so it could have office or retail below and then residential above. The community commercial does not allow like single family homes or apartment units that have residential on the ground floor. You would have to have some sort of commercial element first and then you can build the residential above. But it is a, it's a very busy use. Again, with retail and it is one of our highest sort of commercial uses that you would see on, like I said, Westnidge or Stadium Drive.
Thank you. And just to be clear, also Director Kick, you know, what is the action that you're asking us for this evening?
So this evening was really about giving you information and allowing you to ask me questions about the information that I gave you so that on August 16th, you have all of the information that you need for a final action and vote to decide if you would like to purchase the property or not. I felt like it was very important that you had me to be able to ask questions too, not just a packet in front of you for that final action. So I, I just wanted to be able to have a little bit of discussion time with you.
Right. That's very helpful. Well, along those lines, since, well, I, I've got a couple of things I'll follow up on here and then I'll get to you, Commissioner Prado. So relative to flood plain issues, are we talking about 100 year, 500 year? You know, some portion of wetlands, is there, maybe that's a Director Baker question?
That'd be great. Thanks, Director Baker.
Thank you. Yes, Your Honor. So the flood plain overlay and flood plains can be in wetlands and are not in wetlands. So in this particular case, there is a flood plain overlay on the property and both the 100 year and 500 year kind of line up in the, in the same areas. So that typically this area would be expected to have a 1% annual chance every year of experiencing a flood impact. And, you know, to the extent of, of the flood plain. A, a better rationale to, you know, understand is that if you live in a flood plain, you're at risk of flooding, you know, more often. It's not just the 100 year event or a 500 year event. You know, so you can have flooding that kind of impacts into the floodway even at a, at a five year event or something like that. This site is not currently listed as a wetland. Wetlands are federally protected, federally defined, and they're also enforced and regulated locally under the state of Michigan, under laws, rules and regulations under Eagle. But they also carry a federal priority as well. So this site does not have any federal priority wetlands. This site is covered by flood plain and it does exist in a flood plain.
So, so just one further question on that, not to belabor that point, but I, I'm sure that that provides some limitation on development relative to that status. Is there anything more you want to say about that or?
I think also the fact that this, the entire site is within natural features protection. Extremely important, right? So we follow all of our own zoning. So anything that, and that's why I said our first order of business is to get a request for proposals and get a civil engineer and environmental firm on board. We really want to understand what would it be if the city were able to demo all of that pavement and actually add green space like Director Baker had kind of talked about? What, what kind of impact could we have? What could we do with Portage Creek? Can we add ponds? Like I, I want to explore all of these things. And we really need to be able to understand what, what the impact of, of, of having a, a civil engineer and have a team of people like really thinking about the site in a totally different way, how that could impact this area. And the only way, just going to get on my box for a second. The only way that's going to happen is if we have it, right? If, if the city decides to take on this parcel and, and figure this out. I mean, the, the fact that natural features protection is there comforts me that if it's not us, then who?
I mean, the the fact that natural features protection is there comforts me that if it's not us, then who? Um and in what way would they also be able to look at this parcel? But I I do think it's a a special opportunity as well for the city to be able to take this parcel on and to consider what can be, what could be done with it.
Thank, thank you. Commissioner Prado.
Thank you, Mr. Sorry, I was cutting out, so I didn't hear when you you had moved on with questions. Um uh if I break out, I apologize in advance. So I just wanted to, Director Kick, I was just curious in terms of, has there been any estimates at all about what general upkeep and maintenance will be for that fourteen acres in the interim? You know, obviously, there's some facilities, but also just the grounds in general.
No, I have not looked into that yet, Commissioner Prado. But I could look into that and I could have that information for you um for August sixteenth, if you would like.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'm just curious.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and and just kind of a ballpark, general estimate. And then the other part, do you envision any uh temporary tenants in the space that's uh still in relatively good condition until another use can be formed? Or, you know, uses for that property in the meantime is like revenue opportunities or?
Uh we're open for considerations, so would certainly, you know, engage the community on um any sort of temporary uses or potential leases if we knew of um someone who would who would want to look at the building, absolutely, we could bring those. We've, obviously, we would bring those in front of you um for consideration if we were to do so. Yes.
Yes.
I see your hand up, Commissioner Urban.
Yes, uh uh this is directed to Director Kick. Uh I understand that Phase One uh environmental assessment has been done. And now is is my understanding that those are pretty much paper assessments? Just uh examining the records, no digging, no, no soil sampling? Okay, uh now, are we gonna have the Phase Two done before August sixteenth?
We'll have the Phase Two, uh I I may have Phase Two done before August sixteenth. But it must be done, the Phase Two and the baseline environmental assessment would be done prior to closing.
Okay, so uh
Yeah.
Depending on what uh the is discovered in the BEA in the Phase Two, we have a a an opportunity to uh withdraw our offer if it turns out there's some kind of a time bomb underneath that asphalt?
Yes, that would, that would be in the purchase agreement, yeah.
I know I I sounded really eager back there, but uh I don't wanna buy a a cat in a bag here and nobody does. So I know you don't.
No, thank you. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Director Kick and Director Baker. I appreciate that. So Commissioners, uh the recommended action is a motion to postpone consideration of this item until August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Prado.
Support.
By Commissioner Urban. Any further discussion? Commissioner Prado.
You know, I just wanna really applaud uh you, Director Kick, and your team and city staff for just having the vision about this. You know, really what you're coming to us is very much with a blank slate, you know, with an opportunity for the community to really cast a lot of vision behind, you know, what could be in this space. And, you know, as you say, in a municipality where, uh you know, we're pretty landlocked and you know, fifty-four percent of the uh property is non-taxable and, you know, we're running out of opportunities for green space and whatnot. You know, there's a wealth of opportunity here uh to create a more vibrant community. And so um I really appreciate you um having that vision and I'm excited to see what comes of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Any other discussion? Uh Vice Mayor Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Um just wanna start echoing what Commissioner Prado just um said and thank you, Director Kick and your team. I realize, you know, we are landlocked and we have a lot of um, a lot of use for that space. Um so I'm glad that you took that initiative. Um the only comment that I would say, um you know, in listening to all the feedback that came in, that we really make sure that not just the Edison residents, I don't know what South Town neighborhood it consists of necessarily, but I know that there are two people who consistently call in about South Town. So I just would ask that they are included in the in the initial onset as well as the rest of the residents, which I know you're on top of that, but I just wanna make sure I say that um in this meeting so that the residents, so they they are leading this in that in that way. So, but thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? Clerk Borley, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Prado?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next, our reports and legislation. City Manager Ritzma, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a couple of items. First, uh I'd like to call on our community investment manager, Antonio Mitchell. He's gonna cover uh an upcoming uh item on a future agenda regarding graphic packaging's uh tax abatement and the uh extension of that. Also, um Director Mitchell, our manager Mitchell and our deputy chief, Dave Boyson, are gonna cover uh some of the points that were raised around the gun violence and um updates on on those areas. So uh Antonio, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Um good evening, um Mayor Anderson, Vice McGriffin and city commissioners. Uh thank you for having me again. Last year, um September twenty-first, twenty twenty, um the commission approved um a tax abatement for graphic packaging for twelve years. Um in that approval, though, um you put in some stipulations um of a breakdown of uh one-year, two-year, three-year and a six-year um break um in in that approval process. Um pretty much, uh we were informed as a city that the State of Michigan Tax Commission does not provide contingency abatement certifications. So what that means is that um there would need to be multiple extension of multiple years, um which um could get a little dicey over time uh with the changing of uh commissioners and mayors over that that timeframe. So um we're gonna be coming back with a recommendation um in the next month or so for pretty much the extension to be um approved by the commission for um the remaining eleven years. Um because this was the commission that approved the official twelve years. We wanna make sure this commission has the opportunity to follow through on that commitment um in this timeframe. Plus, um at this time, uh Graphic Packaging is moving steadily and fast with their development. They've already uh have um met their commitment of uh twenty-five to fifty jobs. Um and they could possibly double that number um by time of completion uh with employment at Graphic Packaging with this expansion, so they could have almost a hundred jobs created for this development project um in in Kalamazoo. Um also reminding the community that um this also would be um the largest um North American paper recycling plant um in North America uh with the six hundred million dollar investment. And it opens up um or has opened up discussion with the State of Michigan on working with the the access of one thirty-one coming from the north and south um into the north part of Kalamazoo as well um with, working with the state and Department of Transportation. So the benefits have started already with this development. Um the impact is significant. Um if you go on the north side, you can see the growth and development that it is having. And hopefully, the long-term investment will have um greater benefits um here in Kalamazoo with the growth of um now this campus, but the surrounding area uh with this development. So want to give um the commission time to ask questions on this issue. And when we come back um for the extension approval recommendation, we will have uh representatives from Graphic Packaging here to answer any additional follow-up questions. Um they have also been working with um Mr. Baker uh as well on the smell and other aspects um with that contingency of discussion that's ongoing. And they've been working with us um with their growth and expansion these um in that area, which you've already pretty much um approved the easement agreement um tonight in the consent agenda with that growth and development. So I'm here to answer any questions before we go into the gun violence initiative discussion as well.
Thank you, Mitch, Mr. Mitchell. Questions, Commissioner Cunningham?
Thank you, Mayor. Um when they uh come before us, will they be prepared to speak to you know, the smell, the um and everything that's kind of transpired over the last year uh as it pertains to this different studies and what they tried to do to mitigate any issues that might be on there in?
Yes, um we can ask some um that as well as um if possible, having um Mr. Baker um here as well to collaborate with what they've been uh working on and in discussion and what the continued plans are.
Thank you, Commissioner Cunningham. I know that was obviously one of the most important issues that we discussed back when when this was approved, if if not the most important issue, I would suggest. And so I know we're going to be eagerly looking for that odor task force quarterly report and and what, you know, what's been committed to, what's getting done and what's planned. So that that's gonna be uh make sure that 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 is gonna be an issue, that is gonna be uh eagerly uh awaited a report on and scrutinized, I'm sure.
No problem. I will make sure they know about that.
Uh Commissioner Urban? You are muted at the moment.
Uh say, I wanted to a- ask Antonio. Did I understand you correctly that the state isn't allowing us to to have phased uh extensions to this tax abatement? Uh and that we're having to re- revisit the whole question so that we're in conformance with state law? Is that is, is that essentially it or am I missing something?
Yeah, um pretty much, they they only approve one year. Um pretty much, the city would have to bring, have to come, pretty much the way you set up, the city would have to come back two-year and give extension, three-years give extension, and then six-year give extension for the remaining. So the state pretty much stated that you as the city would have to do the extension request over that time period. They would not approve it the str- the way it was structured and presented to them. They would only approve it the first year.
All right, so basically, we're back to uh having to pro- approve the remaining eleven years all at once based on the face that that it has been generated and the goodwill such as it is uh being developed between the city and gra- uh graphics packaging and between uh the city and the public um since this project was first begun. So uh uh now we're having to revisit this thing and take a, you know, take a swallow take a deep breath, looks like to me. And but it comes down to is trust. So we'll just see how much trust there is.
Other questions for Mr. Mitchell at this time, from Commissioners? Just uh one, one other question for me. Uh when is this planned for our agenda?
Um we'll be working with the managers off the side, the specific date. Um hopefully, it'd be um in September. Some, probably similar date as um the second meeting probably in September is similar to what you approved last year. Um is probably the the best guess, put it that way.
Okay, thank you, sir. Manager Ritzma?
So Antonio wanted me to remind him to uh cover the gun violence pilots as well. So, Antonio?
Yes, uh thank you again, Commissioner Jim. Appreciate it. Um cuz I would have literally forgot. So, want to update um the Commissioners, you approved a hundred thousand dollars to assist with this gun violence initiative. And those fundings for the public was coming out of general fund dollars. It wasn't FFE dollars, things like that. I know that was brought up earlier with uh the public saying, get these FFE dollars. Um so that may be options down the road, but currently, for what we have right now, it's a hundred thousand dollars. I'm speaking on two of those items. Um and then um pretty much Deputy Chief Boyson will speak on the the other portions of what uh Public Safety has been working on. So, the two items that I'm speaking on is the block club component and then the housing repair initiative. And so on the block club component, uh pretty much, we um worked with um a number of block clubs to get started. Um what's been happening is the the block club leaders have taken control of that initiative, which is part of what was our objective in the first place, is to have pretty much our residents lead this initiative. Um that is a continued pattern that we're trying to assess here and make sure we empower the residents um on this initiative. Uh one thing we've been doing is working with Pastor Greg Genies Senior with Progressive um Deliverance Church on doing some additional outreach and communication with residents. And we're trying to also work with um other faith-based organizations um in the community with this initiative. Of course, Isaac has brung up, Action in the Neighborhood, Builders Block and the Neighborhood Associations as well and other um local community leaders to empower the residents to have some say in this initiative. The importance of the of the block clubs is uh is important to at least our division is that we wanna make sure that we're empowering not just the neighborhood associations to reach out in all of the neighborhood, which is great. But we wanna empower each block to control their own destiny um individually on what's going on in their block by working with each other. Um hopefully, with some additional assistance from us, um we will pretty much take their guidance on how they want us to help us or how less they wants to help us, whichever works best for them. But the key point here is um building up um the leadership in those blocks to work together to empower them to literally control their destiny um as as the neighbors and what what is going on in their block. And so we've been working with Public Safety to assist in this process, um especially on the security side and hopefully with future training, but also utilizing other dollars um with um this this uh twenty-five thousand and twenty-five thousand in each two areas to hopefully implement some things that the blocks wanna see happen. Um but we need the blocks to um pretty much come together as residents and speak as one voice on some of the things they would like to see happen. Um working with us as a city and also working with Public Safety um in those areas. In that same tone, uh we know that there's been damage with gun violence. Um and so, under the housing repair initiative, uh we've been um in contact with um in a minimum of like fifty houses so far that have um stated they've been damaged. Um and we'll be working with them um this summer to do those repairs. It took a little bit longer than quote-unquote we expected because um in the case of these um these gunshot damages, there, we don't have large quote-unquote contractors that wanna do these type of jobs. So we pretty much uh finally got um a couple smaller contractors. They were willing to work with us on these uh smaller um pretty much um contracts with these individual houses and that's gonna get started um this summer. And that is my portion.
Thank you, Antonio. And uh before Deputy Chief Boyson jumps in here, I also wanna um mention a meeting that was held a couple of months now ago, probably. Uh the chief, Mayor and I, and I'm not sure if any others were there, um met with Pastor Addis Moore and Miss Stephanie Williams uh from numbers of the north side uh NMA and uh north side resident. Um and basically talked to them about uh wanting to support whatever they can come up with through with the neighborhood in in addressing these issues. So um I know Pastor Moore and NMA held the event, uh two hundred men and um you know, we're continuing to support efforts that they identify. And uh we'd also definitely be interested in other community solutions out there to fund. So So I want to call on Deputy Chief Boyson and to address the gun violence from a public safety standpoint, as well as the group violence intervention program.
Thank you, sir, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayors and Commissioners. I really want to thank the residents who called in tonight, really do bring attention and lift up this huge problem that we're all addressing together and facing. Our hearts really go out to the family members and friends and relatives of those who are impacted by this level of gun violence. Just to put numbers on it, we've had forty-six non-fatal shootings so far this year and eight fatal shootings. Two of those were accidental, but eight people killed and forty-six wounded. And the numbers really don't put a face to this, but that's represents a lot of trauma in our community, not only to those family members and friends impacted, but our officers who are public safety, so we're medical first responders. Also, we're rushing to these scenes to try to save these individuals. And many time it's it's young children. It's just heartbreaking. Our assaults this year with firearms are up twenty-seven percent over this time last year, and last year was a record number. So these are, there's a lot of these incidents that we're responding to on a on almost daily basis. One of the most disturbing trends that we're seeing right now is the youth that are engaging in the gun violence. We've had this back and forth beef between groups and people making up these groups are thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen years old. Recently, a sixteen-year-old boy was shot and wounded in the township. And in the same incident, a sixteen-year-old girl was tragically killed in that incident. And this is part of this group feud that's been going on back and forth that sparked several shootings after that. So we met with the staff and community partners. The community partners and our officers went door to door to engage with the parents and family members of these youth that are involved in this to try to see what we could do to get ahead of it. And we also focused from the law enforcement part on these individuals who are driving a lot of this violence. So we're working very hard as a team to make these arrests and remove these individuals from the streets to calm this down. But unfortunately, in many cases, these individuals are immediately back on the streets. For example, Friday, this last Friday, we had identified a sixteen-year-old who was behind a lot of this gun violence, behind a lot of this feud back and forth. We arrested him on Friday. He was in possession of a stolen nine-millimeter handgun. That gun was forensically linked to several shootings in Kalamazoo, including a house that was shot up last week Wednesday. We arrested him Friday, and as of four o'clock this afternoon, he was released on bond. So these things make it very difficult for us to calm these situations down to get ahead of this. And it's hard hard to do a lot of these things that we're talking about. We work very closely with our community partners, especially through the group violence intervention and these other community groups that are working hard with outreach and social services and to get ahead of these things. But the foundation for any of these initiatives is, you know, the foundation behind that makes alternatives such as interventions and outreach and mediation. The thing that we need to make those successful is the promise of swift, certain legitimate consequences if you continue to pick up a gun and harm our community. And when we don't have those, it really erodes the trust in the public and and many times citizens are rightfully and understandably reluctant to provide information to us in fear of retaliation in case the individual involved gets right back out of jail or the juvenile home in this case. So these are all things that are are, I think, driving a lot of this increase we've seen since the pandemic hit last year. But we are going to continue to work closely with our community partners. We are very blessed in Kalamazoo to have very solid community partnerships that are out there working. And and one caller was exactly right. There's a lot of work going on behind the scenes that doesn't get the recognition it deserves. But we have a lot of community partners that are in the trenches with us out there every day trying to engage with these people who are most at risk and putting themselves in many cases in harm's way to get out there and get ahead of this. And we really appreciate their partnership and their efforts. But again, as someone else put it so well, this is a multifaceted problem. And it's going to really take all of us, community partnerships, the entire criminal justice system, really working together to address this. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyson. Are there any questions for City Manager or his team at this time? Commissioner Urban?
Well, I think I've asked this question before. It seems like it gets down to the jail and the sheriff. What liberties do we have there? And what what are the what what form does the pushback take for us to if we should take some, you know, outrage on our on our part to to press the the courts and the the sheriff to hold these people for a longer time while they await trial? What are the civil liberties implications of that? And what is the public's tolerance for restricting the civil liberties of these people under these conditions?
Well, just to address, you know, it's again, it's not, you can't just point to one thing. You know, the sheriff doesn't set bond. The sheriff doesn't, you know, recommend bond. He just houses people. So when it comes to the bond issue, you know, it's a deeper problem with again, that we just need to get on the same page with the courts. And we do work closely with the prosecutor's office. The sheriff has increased his ability to lodge certain people for certain things. Not just violent crime, but those individuals that we identify as maybe behind this. And we can arrest them for other things to help calm this down. But but again, it it just seems like there's a lot of lot of gaps in the system and people are taking advantage of that because they know, especially when we're dealing with the youth, one of the big problems is is our ability to lodge and house youth right now. And they know that and and there there's not a lot of fear of consequences as evidence of a sixteen-year-old who can be involved in shooting up a house and several shooting incidents, has a stolen gun and is out. You know, he spent the weekend in the juvenile home and he's back out. So it's it's really frustrating to, I know, the community and us as well.
Well, for follow-up question, for people that have multiple offenses under sixteen, is there any exception that is on the books that allows us to pursue them? Or do we need to press our our state legislators to create that?
There are certain designated offenses that can qualify someone for adult prosecution, but the trend really is to kind of get away from that. Except in extreme circumstances, because a lot of times these youth are, you know, they're on a bad path, but doesn't mean that they need to go to prison for a long time, most of them. There are some that are just a danger to the community, but it's the the courts are very reluctant to to take that, except in the most extreme circumstances.
Well, yeah, and I think that that's understandable and that's good, but still the question of being held for a time while awaiting arraignment, that seems like that could be a cooling off time. And that's what I had heard from officers I talked to earlier, right along last year and so forth, that we just could have a time of, say, two weeks or so, so that the likelihood of retaliation for anybody who provides information to the police about these issues, they feel a little safer. And potential victims of retaliation also feel protected. I mean, it seems to me that what does it take to convince the courts that they could be held without bond for two weeks? I mean, I'm just asking this. I you don't have to answer right now if you're not prepared to, but I think the public is kind of want to know as much as I do, as I want to know about that.
Well, Commissioner Clyde Robinson, City Attorney, what you're suggesting is a violation of civil rights. Quite frankly, the whole point of bail is to put up money to guarantee the individual will come back to court to answer for the crime, whether that's a preliminary examination and or subsequent trial. And in regard to, once you are arrested, you have a right to be taken before a magistrate with generally within forty-eight to seventy-two hours in order for a determination to be made whether you should continue to be held for whatever purpose. Nobody, no judge, no court is going to say, we get to hold you for two weeks if you can otherwise make bail or you're not a flight risk. And there's obviously in in the scenario that Chief Boyson gave you, the court made the decision, made the determination that the individual in question was not a flight risk, that they would come back to the court by posting a bond. Oftentimes, people are, that's the whole point of being released on your own recognizance, that the judge is willing to accept your word, I will show up when I'm requested to. Sometimes you need a little bit of monetary incentive to do that, and that's the whole point of a of a bond. But there is more recently, a lot of material about how the the bond system is a detriment to particularly poor people as disparate impact on those folks who can't make bond. And there's some questions as to whether or not the bond system is working as it is intended to.
Well, I wouldn't have asked these these questions if I hadn't heard from some police officers last year that at one time that these people who are getting in trouble with gun violence could have been, could were being held for a longer time in the jail than they currently are. So what has changed in in the law that has has moved the time down for these people? The laws didn't change, some somebody's practices have changed. And I'm just asking, why can't they change back if the law isn't involved?
Is that a question for?
Yes. That's a question to the to the City Attorney or to to Chief Boyson?
Well, I would say that the the law is 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 a, always on a continuous path. I suppose there's a certain amount of pendulum swing that you get. But where we are at now is what the philosophy for bail bonds is is that it's it's not to be used as a punitive measure. It is not to be used to keep somebody in jail when they have a presumption of innocence. It is to guarantee them to reappear in court to answer for the the charge against them.
Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna press much more on this. Suppose the gentleman who was was recently recently released. Isn't he at at risk of being retaliated against because he's out in the open? And he may not show up for for trial because he may be killed by his enemies. He's safer in jail than being out of jail, isn't he? Is that possible?
A hundred percent, yeah. So many times when we are able to arrest and house someone and not only could potentially save other individuals on the street, but most likely, you know, today's shooters are tomorrow's victims. So you're probably saving their lives too. I and I don't know, and again, I'll refer to the City Attorney on this, but there used to be increased bonds for risk to the community. So if someone was a danger to the community and the crime was was serious, they would request a higher bond than, let's say, a relatively minor offense. And there's a lot behind why that's maybe changing. Again, like the City Attorney said, there's a pendulum that that's can swing back and forth. COVID restrictions in the jail probably has a lot to do with that. The other thing that we don't talk about, which is a big issue for the courts, is the prosecutor's office as well. Is there a completely backlog with all these cases? Because there were no jury trials for much of last year. And jury trials in Circuit Court are just starting up now here in August. So there's a tremendous backlog in the system that could play a part in as well. So there's a lot of a lot of layers to this, unfortunately.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Griffin?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. So just to thank you. Oh, I thought his face is up here. Thank you for giving the update on what was was happening with the dollars that the city commission allocated for gun violence. I do want to say that a lot of the conversation, and I and I understand why we, things tend to go the way they no, I don't understand why they go the way they do. But I realize that there's a lack of information as far as the contributing factors. And so if we continue to speak very heavily on prosecutions and jail and jail and jail and jail and jail, the nineties showed us that 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 can't be all of it. I would really like to hear about the projects that were once aspirational, being moved to permanent and the investments that are made in these communities, because we're talking about children. We're seeing the the ages continuously go down. And you cannot, we we can't ignore the fact that Kalamazoo and Battle Creek have the highest population of homeless children in the whole state of Michigan. If we don't start addressing these issues that are feeding into these children, picking up guns and shooting each other at sixteen, then we're jail. Okay, yeah, all right. What about everything else? And so those are the conversations that I would like for us to be having more heavily than just prosecutions and so on and so forth. That's not going to fix the trauma. That that's not going to do it. We've already seen that. So I just wanted to add that to it. I know that that was just one step. There's a lot more to do. I would like to see, you know, maybe maybe there should be an update because there is a lot going on, a lot of different groups that are doing things, but maybe one update. One other thing I would like to say in terms of actual numbers of who has been assisted, the same way we do with any other dollars that we give out. We're able to say where so many people were helped. I would like to see that, those numbers with the initiatives that we have around gun violence.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Any other, Commissioner Prado?
Commissioner Cunningham, did you ever, I think you had your hand up first. Okay, so I just had a question about, you mentioned that there had been eight gun-related fatalities in the city of Kalamazoo in twenty-twenty-one so far, I believe it was in that calendar year so far, if I'm not mistaken. Chief Boyson, I'm I wonder if you have any of the statistics of of the gun fatalities that have happened in Kalamazoo County specifically and outside of our specific jurisdiction within the county?
I do not have those stats. I know that they've also experienced increases in their shootings, both fail and not fail as well.
Do you do you get much of a sense, if you're comfortable answering this, about just the inter-jurisdictional cooperation in terms of preventative measures, you know, being taken to thwart those sort of things? Because I mean, I mean, the reality is, is like, you know, you're talking about certain feuds that are going on and, you know, a feud doesn't know you know, bounds between, you know, Riverview or Crossing Drake or Crossing, you know, Kilgore Road. And so I was just kind of curious about, you know, how that's working with other jurisdictions and that inter-jurisdictional support and whatnot as well.
Yes, we work very well with our regional partners. For example, this most recent homicide in the township a couple of weeks ago, we assisted them, our lab assisted. We've been in constant communication with their detectives and helping them in any way we can. Our detectives are working with their detectives, because like you said, it's technically the jurisdiction of homicide was in the township, but impacts us in Kalamazoo as we've seen retaliatory shootings stemming from that incident. So we we work very closely together. The Sheriff's Department also, we work with. And again, it's it's, we have open communication with them and we're willing and able to assist and vice versa.
You know, the reason I I ask that is just because I hope, you know, the people who called and thank you to those individuals who called tonight to to lift up, you know, prioritizing this as a community issue. But, you know, I hope people continue to make calls to our inter-jurisdictional partners as well. Because, you know, this is, you know, like Vice Mayor was saying, you know, preventative measures or immediate responses, it it doesn't know the bounds of a street or a zip code. And, you know, a white male killed his two parents in the city of Portage right on, I think it was Romance Road. You know, there is a gun violence problem in society in general, but we need to treat it, you know, as a regional problem that it is. And, you know, I really think that that's largely only going to happen if if we all put pressure on all of us to work together to solve those problems. You know, both in a proactive, preferably in a proactive way. So I just wanted to make sure to lift that up as well.
Thank you, Christian Prado. Commissioner Cunningham?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to dig
Thank you, Mayor. I want to dig a little deeper into, I think, what what our Commissioner Pradel was even trying to get at. Can you, Assistant Chief Boyson, speak to how many shootings we've had in the, not not actual, you know, individuals who've been shot, but just then shootings in general? And how many gun shells you guys have collected?
Yes, we've had responded two hundred nineteen reports of assaults with firearms. Some of some of those are shooting, some of those are threatening with a gun. So a lot of cases involving guns. I believe we've seized over four hundred illegal guns off the street this year. So it's a huge number of guns that we're seizing off the street. I don't have the data in front of me of how many shots fired calls that we have responded to. But it's a significant increase from last year. And the shell casings, like you touched on, I also don't have, I apologize, I don't have those numbers in front of me either. But that's where our technology is really coming into play. I talked about our NIBIN machine, that's the National Integrated Ballistics Information Network, that we are luckily partner with the ATF, and we have one of those machines in our our lab. And that's that's huge. So when we recover these casings, we can now, many times within twenty-four hours, get a match back if those have been linked to other scenes. And that was what helped us clear up these cases involving the sixteen-year-old that we just arrested. So that technology is is very important. And the evidence that we're collecting is is very important to link these incidents together. But it is really, it's a disturbing amount of shell casing that we're seizing. Many of our incidents, like the one I talked about recently, where the house was shot up, there was over twenty casings recovered at that scene. So there's just a lot of a lot of shots being fired per incident as well.
Thank you. And and my apologies for those questions. I understand that you probably weren't prepared for. But in reality, you know, I think it puts it into perspective. We, someone has died once a month, eight people. And we're in the beginning of Monday due to gun violence. And so for me, you know, I know someone mentioned, you know, their amendment rights and yeah, I I think I'm really to the point where, yeah. If it was within his body's ability, you know, I would pass a policy right now, ordinance right now, guns cannot be sold in the city of Kalamazoo, period. Don't ask. No bullets, no guns, all of them. But that's obviously not within in our our ability. But I also wanted to push back a little bit on something, you know, the narrative that I've heard it a couple of times, that the city commission has some form of authority to detain criminals. Saying we don't have any any oversight or ability to, you know, do anything like that. It's it's against our ability and against the law. So that being said, you know, I I don't necessarily attribute directly that individuals are coming to police because individuals aren't being detained quick enough. I think that was, that's been a cultural issue for a while. And so what I will do is say, you know, individuals who see an incident and don't want to specifically be attributed to speaking, talking, snitching, whatever you want to please call silent observer. Give as much information as you possibly can and as much information as you know. I also quite often get individuals who reach out to me personally and say, hey, I know this information, I'll share with you in anonymity and confidentiality that you don't, you know, tell anybody who I am or or whatever, what information I gave you. If that makes you more comfortable, reach out to somebody who's willing to, you know, tell your story on your behalf. These type of things, you know, that's a piece of it. We can't put people away if we don't have evidence. I I agree with my colleague, Jack Urban. The system is so broken in so many different ways that we can't keep doing the same thing and expecting different results. I strongly, I, our Vice Mayor mentioned the judicial system isn't going to answer this under no circumstance. Let's be clear on what the information tells us in comparison to any country in the world. Any country in the world. No other country has the gun violence that we have. No other country prosecutes as many people as long as we do. No, not one. So that is a simple answer that continuously prosecuting isn't going to get us to where we're trying to, what we're trying to achieve and accomplish to get. My personal way or advocacy is for our youth. And so unfortunately, Director Fletcher isn't with us tonight. But, you know, Parks and Recs, if we're looking within our administration, who can we also put a lot of this burden that that our our public safety is that is carrying on their shoulders? Who else can we, you know, apply pressure to? And for me, it's our part to wreck. We need to really make sure that we provide great recreational opportunities for individuals from ages thirteen to eighteen. And I know we do amazing in comparison practically any other municipality on employing the ages of thirteen to eighteen. But we need to also have an opportunity to provide some recreational things. You know, whether it's math, science, sports, whatever. That's where a lot of our efforts need to I I think, and then I'm gonna take a page out of Commissioner Hess's book. Educate. We get an opportunity to speak to you, educate. We get an opportunity to to pour, you know, whatever it is that we can pour and and give into a child. That's that's our opportunity. It's hard to change an adult. So how do we start with our youth? And I'll be honest with you, I know we're doing a two-gen approach where we we not only deal with, oftentimes when we're dealing with poverty or other, we look at the adult, but we need to do a two-gener- two-generational approach, where we're looking at the adult and the child. But me, I I mean, I I really focus in on our youth, because I think that's where change is going to come from. It may take a generation or two to get to the place where we want to be as a community. At least one that is much more safer, much more, I mean, it took me until the age of thirty-eight to get a bullet to fly over my head as close as it did. Mind you, I've been around a lot of shootouts and fights and things of that nature. But at the age of thirty-eight, just leisurely in my community, a bullet comes as close as it did to me. It's just unacceptable. So I hate for my long rant, but I feel like anytime this this issue comes up, I get very passionate. And and it's it's frustrating. And I know we're trying to do this as a team, and there's a million different routes and things that that come into consideration as we work through these things, work through these these changes and needed changes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cunningham. Commissioner Hess.
Thank you, Commissioner Cunningham. And since you took a page out of my book, I'm going to take a page out of what I was going to do in comments later, but it seems to fit right now. Not only Parks and Rec, but also the Kalamazoo Youth Development Network, that has so many cohorts cohorts of 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 groups that are working with out-of-school time and with youth, youth of all ages. And this is awesome that just this week or last week, there were fifty-eight youth, fifty-eight youth that sat down with Parks and Rec, Kalamazoo Youth Development Network, and visioned a teen center for the city. So, yeah, so some of the money that that we have coming is able to help us vision. And that's, it's going to be far out, and it's not going to happen tomorrow. What's going to happen tomorrow are people connecting with people and holding people accountable and really working to solve all of these issues. But it does start with education and working with our youth. You know, the KDPS has been reaching out and like the the event at the Crum Park and so many other things, they've been reaching out with the youth. And I think that's just really important, that we all continue to do that in this community.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Any other questions for staff or Manager Ritzma on this topic? I've seen any, anything else, Manager Ritzma?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, just thank you for being present and opening up this conversation on this and having great members of your team here. Thank you. Deputy Chief Boyson and Manager Mitchell for being here to discuss this topic. I know that we have a policy item coming up. I guess I will just make sense, this is germane to all this. It was something I was going to talk about in my commission comments as well, but I I think that for anyone who's watching and those of us participating, that it is indeed the case that this is a number one priority for all of us in the city who are involved with this day in and day out. It is a baseline expectation that everyone who lives in the city should feel that they can live in a safe neighborhood. And they don't have to worry about their children playing in the front yard or walking down the street to a park. I know that these challenges are countrywide, not just here in Kalamazoo. But I I deeply believe that if we as residents of Kalamazoo, all of us believe that this is all our problem and not someone else's problem to deal with, that that we can come up with viable, immediate and long-term responses that can have a profoundly beneficial effect long run as it relates to dealing with this. So I think it's it's very, very important that serious people spend serious time thinking about this topic and offering best practices and things we can try that we are not certain will be effective. But we certainly have the the need to allow the room for ourselves to try things, even if they fail and try something else. But standing by and throwing up our hands collectively is going to have no beneficial effect. So thanks for this discussion. We're now down to K policy items. City Manager Ritzma.
Item K one, adoption of a resolution extending the local emergency due to the COVID nineteen epidemic and permit the city commission and all other city of Kalamazoo public bodies to continue to meet by electronic means after August thirty-one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there a staff report on this item?
No, Your Honor, we covered this at the committee of the whole meeting, and it's consistent with what was talked about at the last committee of the whole meeting in July.
Okay, appreciate that. So are there any questions from commissioners who want to ask anything related to this particular motion? Manager Ritzma? I don't see any questions. Just a reminder for those watching that there was a extended discussion at our committee of the whole meeting, which is at five o'clock as it relates to this topic and at an earlier meeting as well. Seeing none, then the recommended action is a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Cunningham, supported by Commissioner Pradel. Any further discussion? Commissioner Pradel?
Sir, thank you, Mayor. I I just think this is a prudent step, you know, we, even a month ago, we talked about this a bit earlier, but even a month ago, we were in a different circumstance than we are today with the Delta variant. You know, I think the wise thing to do is to give ourselves the greatest latitude so if circumstances change quickly, that we can adapt accordingly. There is still a lot coming out, a lot of guidance. You know, we talked about this in the committee of the whole meeting. You know, CDC just came out with more guidance about transmission ability with people who are vaccinated. Still, kids twelve and under can't be vaccinated. You look at Florida as an example, that one in five people nationwide who have a COVID case right now are in the state of Florida. And do a just quick Google search about the number of children in the state of Florida who are in the ICU or hospitalized. It's quite staggering. And if it can happen in Florida, it can happen anywhere in the country. And until we're at a hundred percent vaccination, which we are not, and until every child of all ages can be vaccinated, there is no uncertainty. I think this is a great opportunity for us as a community to lead. And it may not be the most popular with everybody, but I think in our hearts of hearts, you know, we know what we're here to do and we're to make make to make the right choices to keep, you know, the public safe and healthy. So I think this is the right choice to keep everybody involved safe. So I just wanted to make sure to lift that up.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Other discussion, Commissioner Urban? You're muted, my good friend.
We heard during the committee of the whole meeting, which, by the way, is open to the public, that the incidence rate of COVID nineteen in Kalamazoo County is is over double the the state average currently. That's new information that wasn't available even two weeks ago. So our decision to allow for the continuation of electronic meetings through December, it seems seems more prudent than ever. I think that is going to be a popular decision among a great portion of our population. It just won't be popular with everybody. So I'm comfortable with the the direction we're going, and we'll be guided by data and by advice from our county health officer for sure, as as the weeks proceed. So I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Urban. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Clerk Borley, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. At this time, we'll hear from any commissioners who wish to make comments. Commissioner Urban?
I I think I've said enough already for tonight. I'm done.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Just want to highlight how appreciative I am for those who gave the four hundred million dollars. Again, I had the opportunity to serve prior to prior to the gift and Foundation for Excellence. And I can honestly say, every meeting we have, I would just, I'm just going to use this year specifically. There is a conversation in every single meeting that we would have had prior to this gift. Literally, our only decision-making at that time was where do we cut? How do we cut? Where do we cut next? So we weren't, we weren't aspirational. You know, simple things or things that I would have assumed to have assumed to been simple, such as, you know, keeping up simple infrastructure like sidewalks. You know, there was zero dollars for that for how many years? I don't know prior to me, but, you know, that wasn't even an option. And so I want to say thank you for that, but I also want to, it was mentioned that those dollars are transformational. I also want to highlight, you know, our city administration's transformation. And the people that work there are transformational. And we have some of the most amazing individuals who are serving in that capacity. And so I am appreciative of of your servitude and and the heart that a lot of you have. I know recently, even as of last week, I had four employees who assisted me with one project or another after hours. And and I know how stressful that is to still be connected to your job after you've already put in forty. And so I'm thankful for that. And, you know, the four hundred million dollars, it may feel like a lot of resources, but it's very, it's very, my these issues go beyond dollars, and it comes back to the the basics of who we are, human beings. And so where the real value at is the, the basics of who we are, human beings. And so where the real value at is in our, our individuals who are serving in these capacities. Our individuals who are willing to go out and, and teach and learn and love on one another to improve and educate. And so just wanted to really highlight our staff, our administration and to really highlight the difference between the conversation we're having now and the conversation we had in 2015. And we're still having these conversations during a time when most municipalities are having a very hard time dealing with the pandemic. And so now though it's not perfect, we're trying to get better. Those are some things. I just want to continue to build each one, each, each and every person up. Because as much as we hulk and tear each other down, it's more important that we build them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cunningham. Commissioner Knott?
Sure, I'll just quickly give a shout out to Director Kik. Rebecca, that was a concise and comprehensive presentation tonight that cleared up a lot of misinformation that had been circulating. So I appreciate the way that you drilled down and, you know, answered all of our questions and I look forward to discussing it in two weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner Knott. Commissioner Pradel?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to again echo everyone else and just thank donors who made this $400 million gift possible. I, you know, went home after the ceremony on city hall steps. Looking at my three kids, I'm thinking to myself, wow, this is not just a gift that will be realized in this time. But my kids, when they're my age, will be still realizing the fruits of this. Their kids, when they're my age, will still be reaping the benefits of this gift. That is amazing opportunity for this community and I look forward to seeing what, what it brings and hopefully my lifetime. And theirs. Commissioner Cunningham, you encapsulate it better than anybody so far. Youth, 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 right? I mean, I mean, 80% of brain development happens before the age of five. And you know, I can think of no group of people in society worldwide that have probably been impacted more so by this pandemic than young people. So to me, you know, as we're talking about the stimulus dollars next meeting, as we're having conversations about aspirational funding in the future, before and after school programming, early childhood education, career exploration, recreation, mental health and trauma services for kids, finding ways to encapsulate those types of things and programming for youth. You know, in the current existing programs we have, whether it be public safety or whether it be parks and recreation, I think there is a goldmine of opportunity to proactively change generations to come in terms of, of gun violence and, and trauma-related events. Wanted to make, take a minute just to point out, the 53rd city commission, we have five meetings left together. And aside from special meetings, as it stands right now, just kind of putting that perspective, we are going to lose four commission seats. So we'll have four new faces of the six commissioners. And that's a big change. And so, you know, I just wanted to, to say to anybody who's running or anybody who has thoughts or whatever, you know, I want to be accessible and available. And I guess it'd be Commissioner Hess and I left standing out of the six commissioners, but it's a big change. And I, I also just looking at the history as well, you know, the first city commission under a certain form of government was established in April 1918. And you think about what was happening in 1918 was the largest pandemic in recorded world history. And, you know, you can go back and look back at the articles that the Kalamazoo Gazette at the time and see around this very time, the world was grappling with a very similar issue. And so here we are today, the 53rd commission in 2021, doing the exact same thing. I wanted to just take a second as well and for Clerk Borland here, you saw that some polling locations were changed tonight based on the KPS administration requesting that we use some alternative sites. And, you know, this impacts five locations for the election. And, you know, Clerk Borland reached out for just some support and ideas in terms of looking for alternative polling sites and some of the, the different polling precincts. I challenge anybody to look at some of the precincts and try to find a creative place that's a nonprofit organization that has the size and layout you need, the parking, the proximity to voters in the area, accessibility for voters. It is not an easy task when you take schools off of the table. Especially if you look at precincts like Precinct Five, which is the Arcadia neighborhood, or Precinct 10, which is like around Spring Valley Elementary School. It's, it's tricky. And so, you know, I know there will be some people who are maybe, you know, not super thrilled about those changes or whatnot, but, uh, but I just want to let you know that your, your city clerk has worked, office is working really hard to make sure that those are accessible. And then really last here, I just have been trying to make it an effort to recognize a different city staff member each meeting. And I, tonight I want to recognize Suzanne Rowland. And she serves as the Public Services Coordinator. If you ever put in a ticket on a request, if you go to kalamazoo city.org/reportstreet, so if you report a pothole or a light that's out, a very friendly presence will respond back to you. And, and she does this all the time for me. Getting back to you, trying to pinpoint the location and make sure that it's very precise and we figure out where it is. And I've just always been very impressed with her level of customer service and responsiveness to those requests. I wanted to make sure to recognize her tonight as well. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Commissioner Hess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to acknowledge the, the passing of a longtime resident here in Kalamazoo and the owner of Farrell Ballet Theater. Sheriff Farrell has affected and it really touched the lives of hundreds of people in this community. And her passing was sudden. And so my thoughts, my prayers go out to her family and those who loved her and may you find comfort in this community. To address the citizens who all called on about gun violence, yes, if I weren't sitting in this little square right here, I would have been on the phone calling in saying, hey, we gotta do something about gun violence. It's, I, I feel so strongly. July 24th, Pastor Jennings led a, a march through the north side that was attended by dozens of folks. And, and, and where so many things were talked about and the people that I walked alongside all had ideas and they all had thoughts about what to do, what do we do about gun violence? What do we do about this? We care. How can we say we care? We can be present and we can, and be there. There are other marches planned for the east side in August, I believe. And I'm not sure about that date, but I, I want to show up for those. And those are important. I was walking along with some of the, the congregation of St. Joseph, the, the nuns who, who deeply care about our community. And, and because of age and frailty, can't really do a lot, but they're present. They're present to so many of us. And so there's people who deeply care in this community and I want us all to work together for the greater good. As a member, I'm, I'm a member of the Foundation for Excellence Board of Directors. And yes, we will be using these funds to address the issues that plague this community. And it won't be immediate, but they will be impactful for generations as, as Commissioner Pradel has said. And, and the solutions will be very holistic, which means whole and keeping everyone in mind. As we began the meeting, Pastor, is it Moisey Rosara? Said, may we grow closer and have a bond of love among each other. I will say publicly right now, that's my prayer for this commission and for this community. And that said, the rest of my comments tonight are about that and about growing closer and about creating a bond of love in this community. They're about optimism and gratitude. Saturday, Saturday, I'm really grateful to the group Hope for Creation and to the Environmental Concerns Committee and to Parks and Recreation, who all partnered together to have our second styrofoam collection. That happened on Saturday at Mayor's Riverfront Park. The next one will happen the last Saturday of October. So that's really wonderful that we're keeping that much styrofoam out of our landfills. Huge gratitude to Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety, Chief Coakley, Assistant Chief Boyzen, Assistant Chief Victor Green. And the many officers who worked into the evening to prepare and provide a use of force simulator for a group that I'm associated with, with just faith. With my, my faith and racial justice group. Ten of us were, were led through initiatives that these officers face on a daily basis. Every single one of us came out transformed. We had, we, we were inspired. We were very inspired by A, just their ability and their willingness to be there. Their professionalism, their level of training, their level of engagement, of compassion, of empathy that they have for this community. Their intelligence and their heart. These are the men and the women that serve our community on a daily basis. And we came out very impressed and, and everyone in that group has reached out to me and said, what can we do to support them? I'm going to publicly say I support them. They do amazing things and I'm really happy that they're a part of this community. Lastly, in the life of our city, we have to celebrate what we do well. As, as Commissioner Cunningham said, yes, it's education. We do education really well in this community and I'd love to see us celebrate it. But the $400 million gift, which is, as, as Manager Ritzma said, 40 million over 10 years, opened up our ability to dream. It opened up this community conversation about how we use our resources for the greater good of all the people of this community. And I will tell you that this 53rd commission is on board with the greater good of all the people of this community. It was such an exciting moment. I was really proud to be a resident of Kalamazoo and to represent Kalamazoo at that point. And from now into perpetuity. So that said, I'm just, I, I leave tonight with, with lots of gratitude and a lot of optimism for the future of the people of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Vice Mayor Griffin?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. I just briefly, just want to lift up as we were at our committee of the whole meeting, someone was shot as we were having a conversation about, you know, gun violence. And so I just want to name that and acknowledge, you know, everyone that we lost last year, everyone who has been affected and everyone who continues to be affected. We've just, we have more work to do. And I know that there are people who are on the ground committed and yeah, it's just really heavy right now. So thank you.
Amen, Vice Mayor. So I also was blessed to be able to participate in the announcement that we made this week about this unparalleled commitment to this construct that we have in Kalamazoo, where philanthropy is creating an endowment for the city in perpetuity. And I just want to make a couple of comments about that tonight. Maybe also clear up some concerns a little bit and also address perhaps some misunderstandings. Just on the concern side, I, I know that from time to time when these announcements are made, there are concerns expressed about undue influence. What does this mean? Are, are, are people's decisions being bought by these kinds of commitments? And I can tell you that those kinds of concerns about undue influence have guided formation of this Foundation of Excellence since it was first conceived and built and developed. And every step of the way, in terms of the initial memorandum of understanding, the, the operating bylaws for the Foundation of Excellence Board, which is made up of community members and the transparency that's required in all transactions. And then ultimately, the, the decisions on spending are made by the elected members of the Kalamazoo City Commission are all in place. Those documents are all public and available so that anyone with concerns can look at the very, very careful construction of this unbelievable resource so that it is decisions are community-based and the investments are community-driven. As far as a misconception, this is obviously an unbelievable commitment that we, we recognized just this last week. But I want to be clear about that is that through, starting in what, 2017, I guess, over four years and through 2020, that $120 million has already been spent on projects funded through the Foundation for Excellence. And these, this funding has occurred through shorter term relationship contracts with the funders to fund current needs to the tune of about $25 million a year. More or less, over the, the course of this time. And, and that is continuing that work. So we are, we are not waiting for this endowment to be funded. This work is already occurring. As Commissioner Cunningham so eloquently put it, you know, we have been living in a transformational time. The most intensely powerful thing for me about this commitment is that this commitment is to our endowment. So this is not a $400 million commitment to say, oh, now we will have money tomorrow. Now funds aren't a problem tomorrow. We have Foundation for Excellence funds right now that we're spending. But this commitment is a commitment for what we have been talking about tonight. It's a commitment for young people. It's a commitment for future commissions that we cannot even imagine. And future residents of Kalamazoo to ensure that this benefit will be there in perpetuity. This is a commitment to fund the principal to the, the core endowment for this construct, the Foundation for Excellence. And I think it's been just a little over five years now, just a few days over five years since our first meeting about this. I believe that was July 28th in 2016. Correct me, City Manager, if I'm wrong on that, where we talked about this idea of having what is going to initially be a half billion dollar, a $500 million endowment, which will be carefully managed and can grow through investment over the course of time. So that on and on and on, this resource can be available to fund critical needs for those of us who live in Kalamazoo. And really more so those of us who live in Kalamazoo, who are our children, children and our children's children. That's the commitment. And that is what makes it so incredibly powerful. Because once again, long after I am gone and this commission is departed, and these are all hopefully happy memories for those of us who have participated in this, that resource will be there. Thank you, funders. From the bottom of my heart, the last thing I wanted to say about that goes back to a, a well-worn phrase that I think we will all A, a well-worn phrase that I think we will all recognize, but that. That phrase is to whom much is given, much is required. And. This commitment in terms of funding. As fabulous as it is. Doesn't make a real difference in people's lives unless people. All of us. Determine how we too. Can be part. Of the foundation for the excellence that we want in our community. And that means that we need to commit our time in our good thinking, in our prayers, in our efforts. So that we all now are part of. The excellence that we desire, the foundation for hope and opportunity that we want to create in this community. So this doesn't relieve us from responsibility. This demands. Our participation. I don't want to be overly serious about that, but. The effect only happens. Heart to heart, human to human. So remember, keep your hearts open. I love you, Kalamazoo. We are adjourned.